Raise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to welcome everyone to our regular meeting of February 17th. Check, make sure I have the right day there. Please note that council's in full attendance. And I do want to recognize a couple of people real quick. We have a former mayor Armstrong and his wife Linda C. And also our recently named distinguished citizens, Melvin and Janie Lacker here. They just received that distinguished honor. So it's good to see y'all. And of course, the Citizens Academy is here. Raise your hand if you're in the Citizens Academy. Okay. I don't know why you're all sitting in the back, but that's okay. And hopefully, we can visit after the meeting. So I'm very, very happy to see you all here. So, okay. Did I get everybody? Okay. All right. We do, we'll go into items from council. We have a couple of things there. Do y'all just want to address those first, form a request? The batting cages, we have a report.
Mm-hmm.
From Parks and Rec?
For me, and then Parks and Rec will help me out if I need it, or Kobe will. I don't know if the whole Parks and Rec's department's here. But Councilman Bocknight asked a few months ago about the possibilities of getting batting cages at the youth sports complex. Kobe did a rough estimate, and based on what he's determined, for, I call them pods, little four little pods that would have two batting cages in each pod with the concrete, the netting, the frame, approximately forty-six thousand a set, and would recommend at least four for the complex to accommodate the number of tournaments and events that are going on. What I would ask Mr. Bocknight, if you wish, is that something that there's a consensus from council to put into the budget for next year, if applicable, under hot funds? It's not a recommendation for the general fund because it's a nice to have and not a need it?
Right. I was thinking along the lines of hot funds.
Okay.
I'd like to see it. It's something that some of the tournaments, I'd spoken to the guests that came to it and had mentioned that most of the other facilities have it, and there's not a place to actually warm up.
Mm-hmm. It's a, it would be a very nice accommodation out there if we could. What we'll do is when we bring back the hot funds through the budget process, we will list that, and then council will have an opportunity to vote on it at that time if there's a consensus, at least four of you that are okay to look at that.
Quick one question. Would we be, other people be able to use them when no one else is there?
That's one of the things we're, we'll explore as we go forward.
There'll be other times when it's just empty, you know, no one's using them. They could rent them or lease them or schedule to use those batting cages.
Kobe and I talked about the availability of doing that. So we'll have to, you know, with using hot funds, have to determine what's the best way to do that. So, but yes, sir.
Well, I certainly support that.
Well, we'll look at it for sixteen now. Thank you, Kobe.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, we do also have a Victoria Alliance update. Mr. Alvarez, do you want to start that?
Yes, let me say a few words to address some of the comments that were made by Dr. Shook at the last meeting. To emphasize again, this initiative is community-driven. It's not city council or city-driven, and I think there seems to be maybe a misunderstanding in that respect. And then the other thing I wanted to address was this vision and the ideas that are being proposed and worked through are the community's ideas. They're not out-of-town ideas necessarily, or ideas from Florida. But, but these are going to be ideas and discussions that generate or originate here, and ultimately will be called to determine what are some of the things our citizens want and desire and vision of Victoria going forward. And I hope that from that, council and other government entities can take some of that discussion that's generated and then incorporate it into some of our decision-making as well. But tonight, Allison, who's been kind of, I guess the staffer on the, as far as the Alliance is concerned, wanted to come forward and make a presentation and give us an update.
And just a few comments, Allison, before we get started. You received a copy of the summary of the last meeting, so, you know, for review, and I think her PowerPoint kind of feeds from that. But Allison is the launch coordinator for the Victoria Alliance. Allison Paul Griffin, so everybody knows who she is. But, and she'll talk about upcoming meetings. But one thing, to remind you and the public is, we're, you know, as we work on our comprehensive plan for the city, we're also using this data that's being gathered by the Victoria Alliance. So it's valuable data for us too. So, okay, Alice, I'm sorry.
You're on the board.
I am on the board, yes.
Emmett is on the board.
Steering committee. Yes, steering committee.
Okay, okay. Very good. Allison, go ahead.
Well, my name is Allison Griffin. I'm the launch coordinator for Victoria Alliance. And as Charmel said, council should have received that meeting summary. And what I have in PowerPoint for you today just kind of flows off of that. Victoria Alliance was formed with the idea of building a better community together by engaging our citizens in problem-solving, aligning our resources, and then measuring those results. So we are still in that engagement phase, which is the survey which was put out, and also these four community forums which are open to the public. So I want to review the community survey results that were revealed at our January 24th forum. And again, as Emmett said, this is all community-driven. It is not based off our consultant out of Florida. They just take the data and run with it. So our community survey, we had eighteen hundred and sixty-nine responses. And based off what Ben at JCCI has told us, we had a very good response as far as percentage of citizens. As far as San Antonio, what they had, they only had, when they did this process, four to five thousand respondents. So we had a nice percentage. We would have liked to have seen more respondents in that eighteen to twenty-four bracket, just because we would like to see those age groups stay, live and work in Victoria. Also, as far as demographics, would have liked to have seen more respondents from the Hispanic community as well as the African-American community. We would have also liked to see some more participation from those lower income levels as well as lower educational experience. We heard from, this just gives you a breakdown of respondents by zip code and neighborhoods. Castle Hills, North Crest, Old Victoria, Colony Creek, Country Club were our top neighborhoods. We also did have quite a few responses from the rural areas. Overall, sixty-six percent of respondents are satisfied with the quality of life in Victoria, eighteen percent neutral, and sixteen percent were dissatisfied. There's strong satisfaction with higher education, feelings of safety, strength of our neighborhoods, quality and availability of health services, as well as opportunities to enjoy arts and culture. We saw moderate satisfaction with the quality and quantity of parks, protection of natural environment, quality of services provided by the city, sense of community, availability of job training, the vibrancy of downtown, and our sense of community pride. The lowest levels of satisfaction were found in our street conditions, cost and availability of housing, quality of recreational programs, traffic conditions, K-12 education, and our opportunities to find good-paying jobs. Survey respondents also had, these top ten issues came out of things that they liked best, and that's our size, that we're near amenities, larger cities, traffic, family, location, people, friendliness and sense of community, retail shopping, jobs and weather. What they found most important to preserve is our small-town feel, our history, downtown, parks, sense of community, safety, schools, arts and culture, environment, and our ease of travel. Top ten challenges that we face according to these respondents are our traffics and roads, education, growth, entertainment, housing, leadership, retail, gangs and crime, infrastructure and jobs. So in those areas that they also like to see improved, they kind of follow off that with transportation, education, parks, entertainment and restaurants, downtown beautification and housing, we're seeing being a big issue for these folks. So following, these were revealed at the first sense, the first forum, which was, the idea there was to pull consensus on these issues and values moving into our next meeting. And so participants that were there that day, after hearing the survey results, worked in small-group form. There was about eight people per table. They worked, they filled out a worksheet individually and then also worked as a group. So the first exercise that they did was the best thing about living in Victoria. So after completing that exercise, then, they did report out to the room. And Mayor Palosic and Councilman Bocknight can attest to the fact that people really wanted to speak. They wanted the mic. They wanted to be heard, which was refreshing for us. And these are the things that were reported out by citizens. Quality of life, sense of small town, excellence and affordability of higher education, development of our culture and arts, location, Parks and Rec, ability to participate in the community, our fascinating history, that citizens here are self-reliant, there's opportunities for growth, and that the American dream is alive and well here, as well as we have great medical care, hospitals and doctors. Now, the next exercise that they participated in was what they wanted to most see improved. They reported out that they want more retail and living space in downtown, as well as locally-owned businesses there, retain our young professionals, student retention, vocational training at the high school level, comprehensive development plan and regrowth in the South Side, more engagement and more diverse engagement and community leadership, mental health awareness, transparency on how and what our taxes are funding, quality affordable housing for all ages, better infrastructure, increased recreation, entertainment, shopping, youth activities in the ever-popular water park, and the use of our river. Now, following, this ended the meeting, the first forum, and following that, participants had the chance to fill out an evaluation form, what they liked about the meeting, what they thought could be improved, but also who they did not see in the room, what groups were missing. And so Victoria Alliance is really looking for these groups to show up at our next forums. These were called out strictly by the participants, and they saw that city council was missing, county government, clergy, more participation from the Hispanic and African-American community, social services directors, college students, VISD officials, lower-income groups, medical community, and South Side residents. So as an, as a launch coordinator, we ask for you guys to go forth to your constituents, anybody that falls in this group, ask them to participate, relay the importance of their voice, and also we're open to any and all suggestions of how to better reach these groups and get them involved. Our next forum is this Saturday, February 21st, at Victoria West High School cafeteria from 10 to 12. They'll be, we'll be creating targets based off what came out of the first forum and the vision scans, and those are identity of the town, education, entertainment, economy, growth management, and our natural environment. Participants on Saturday will have the chance to pick which table they'd like to work at. And then at some point in the meeting, they will be asked to get up and go to a different table. So if education is something that they, they really want to work on, then they've got the choice and chance to focus on those things. So again, we ask you to attend this Saturday. If you can't, these are the dates for our forum three and four. Forum three is Monday, March 23rd at Victoria East from 5:30 to 7:30. And then our final forum will be Tuesday, April 28th, back at the Student Center at Victoria College. So again, thank you for having me. If you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them, and all the meeting results will be available on our website following those forums.
Very good, very good. Is there questions while council, while she's here? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here. Thank you, Allison. Okay, we're still under items from council. So anything else?
Do we have an update on the Pavilion, the old Riverside Convention Center? Could we get an update on that?
I think we're planning on doing that during the CIP discussion.
Riverside, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Riverside Convention, the old Riverside Convention Center.
Yeah, that's been brought to CIP.
CIP, yeah, we're still, we're still working on that, so, but yeah.
I read the preliminary engineering report again the other night, and it left a lot of it vague, and that's why I assumed we'd have more to look at when it comes to CIP.
So that second meeting in March.
Very good. Okay.
Mayor, I had two items.
I apologize. The stuff I sent to Lynn was not on, that was on the Parks building. It wasn't on the.
Oh, the Riverside Convention.
Riverside Convention. I'm sorry about that. I wanted, Lynn looked at me, and I'm like, wait a minute, I don't think I gave you.
We're still planning on doing that that night, though.
Yes, I've got that information on it, but I got to thinking I didn't send that to Lynn, so I didn't want to put him on the spot there.
We're just now, we just recently received some information that we're going over ourselves internally.
Thank you. Mr. Alvarez, did you have?
Yes, Mayor, I had two things. If we could have a discussion now or later about jaywalking in our community, I'm very concerned. I see numbers of our citizens walking, especially on Rio Grande and on Navarro, in the middle of the street. And given the high rate of speed in those areas that cars are traveling, is there some enforcement that can be done in that, along those lines? Maybe the city attorney could help us out.
I know there was, because we had a little discussion right before the meeting about the legality of.
That's right.
Way on this.
Sure, just a very brief overview, because it was just a very quick conversation before the meeting. I'd like more time to research it before giving a thorough answer. But in the city of Victoria, jaywalking is covered only by state law. There are provisions in state law that govern, or that prohibit jaywalking in certain areas. But the way it's defined has to do with the traffic control devices that are located at adjoining intersections and other things. So it doesn't apply necessarily in every block of every street. So in order to have a more specific conversation about a specific crossing or a specific neighborhood, I'd like the opportunity to look at exactly that area. But I do think that's a conversation we could bring back.
Just put it under items from council for next meeting.
If that's possible, yes.
And you know this specifically, we're talking about Navarro.
Navarro, I would say anywhere from, well, let's start from Rio Grande north to, I mean, cut off at the mall. I mean, you can go the whole, it's such a busy street. But I see, I observe a lot of jaywalking at Rio Grande and Laurent to Ben Jordan in that area as well. I guess they're going to the HEB store there and back and forth. But let's look at those areas specifically and better understand what's legal and what's not, and whether or not maybe some enforcement. I'm just concerned some people are going to get hit by cars.
They have been hit, so you bet.
And I had one other item. I was interested in developing, if we could ask finance to look into developing a schedule of projects that are associated with our current city's debt. I think that's one of the things I noticed in the Alliance's issues about where our tax money's going. Well, we've got, we've used a lot of that for debt service, debt service, but those projects are going on throughout the community. And in some cases, and just I realize visiting with Gilbert, you know, a lot of our projects we're paying with cash. And however, just to better understand the debt that we've, we're carrying, to associate them with the projects that that debt represents, just to kind of keep the citizens informed. One that comes to the top of my head is like the wastewater treatment plant. That's about a twenty million. Those are revenue bonds through the, through the utility bill, I understand. But again, you know, it's a significant project that's underway now, under construction. And not everybody's going to see that project unless they go down there and look at it. And it's kind of out of sight, but it's a significant project. So I was hoping we could put together our schedule, if you will, for lack of a better word.
Be glad to.
The construction of that wastewater plant is being filmed. Mr. Garza's, and I know phase one, it's kind of boring. It just shows a lot of, you know, that time-lapse photography. There's a camera out there. So when it's all done, we'll have a very interesting video of it going up real fast. And that's good to show people what they're getting, because you're right, nobody goes down there hardly, so.
But there's a lot of street projects underway.
Oh, yeah.
Fire station.
That's good.
Fire station.
Sam Easton Laurent. I mean, you know, that debt will be, we'll be paying on that debt, and those are big projects, so.
Don't want to make it a big, don't want to make it a big exercise, but something that would kind of update us on that. Thank you.
Mayor, before you move on, if I may, staff would like to also pull item D2 from the consent agenda.
Okay. All right. I know you have an amendment for that one.
That's correct. We have a substitution.
Okay. Very good. We're basically just don't have a consent agenda. We'll just read everything. Okay. Anything else under items from council? If not, we'll go ahead and open citizens communication, and anyone who wants to come speak to us about anything at all, please come forward and give us your name and address. And we do ask that you be, just out of respect for everyone's time, try to limit your comments to five minutes, please.
Thank you. My name is Claude Raffin. I live in Las Vegas, Nevada, but I'm not a gambler. I'm the co-owner of the Villas apartment across from the mall, and also in the process of building forty-eight apartments down the house style, known as Vista Alta. And I've never come here at the right week to speak with you, to recognize publicly and express my appreciation for the cooperation and the professionalism of your staff, building and planning departments. In fact, everyone that we have come in contact with have always been friendly, they would express support, they've always shown a can-do attitude, and to me, it's very impressive. When we first turned our plans in for Plan Shake, I was told, oh geez, there are a couple of big projects ahead of you. It's going to take us a little longer to approve your plans. Seven working days later, we had our plans approved. Amazing. Contrast this with what we had in California. We tried to build twenty-nine luxury condos. After five years and five hundred thousand dollars, we finally pulled our building permits. We get, we were financially exhausted, emotionally exhausted, and that's when we did a 1031 tax deferred exchange, and we discovered Victoria, and we thank our lucky star that we found Victoria. And also, we'd like to recognize one of your inspector, Eli Brisono, Brisono, who went above and beyond. We had a deadline to meet a tax-deferred exchange, IRS tax-deferred exchange. We had one day to go, and when it came that morning, there were a few things that were wrong. Well, he offered to come back in the afternoon to see that we had done or rectified those minor items, and he did. And we got our certificate of occupancy in time to meet, satisfy the deadline. So it's really been a pleasure working with all your staff, and I want to compliment you on the caliber of your staff at all levels.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much from all of us, and I appreciate that. And I apologize, I don't want to mispronounce your last name, but would love to meet you later if possible, so thank you.
That's a tough one to follow. My favorite subject, as I think most of you know in this room, is economic development. And once again, I'm here, and I was going through some of my old files, and look at here. Here's Emmett Alvarez. His first job, working for BEDC. In 1986, we had a similar situation that's evolving now. We had the oil bust. And if I remember correctly, we had about eleven hundred homes for sale, and most of them were owned by banks. And we had about eleven percent unemployment. And I don't remember how far oil fell, but we found out very quickly we were an oil town. The city made a purchase, they purchased the old Sears and Roebuck Building, which was all boarded up with plywood, and that was, and building purchased, okayed by council June 8th, 1986. The council was willing to make an investment, and investments are contagious, and I congratulate y'all for making an investment in Victoria. And I'm asking the city to make an investment in Victoria also. And we came before you quite some time ago and asked for a study on the feasibility of a downtown standalone visitor center. And we never received a formal answer. I'd like to re-ask again for that study to be conducted. And I want to, I don't want to be the one to introduce Anthony Cordell, Tony, your new director of tourism, but this would be a good time to put together a study committee, and it won't cost any money. You're going to pay him. You're not going to pay any of the committee members. Anyway, I think that our history is an asset that we need to flaunt. We made the investment in eighty-six for the Sears Building. I can't remember exactly, it's just several short years ago, we made the investment for the pavers in downtown Victoria. It's time for us to be concerned about our economy. We have hundreds of apartments being built. We have hundreds of motels being built. We have an industry that's, that's in the process of reorganizing. This would be a good time for a study and good time to think about an industry. I have nothing critical whatsoever to say about the tourist convention committee, but I, or the tourist invention efforts that the city's made, but it's not complete in my mind until we have a standalone visitor center in downtown Victoria. With those in the audience that came here to specifically welcome Mr. Cordell to Victoria, would you raise your hand or stand up? That's, that's the tip of the iceberg. There are a lot of people in town that are excited about what we could do in Victoria. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Armstrong. Citizens communication is still open. If anyone else would like to come up, now's the time. Okay, seeing none, we'll close citizens communication. And we do have one ordinance with the public hearing. You want to read that?
That's right. This is actually a resolution that requires a public hearing. It's a resolution granting an annexation petition from Navin Investments LLC for approximately 2.34 acres of land and authorizing the city staff to prepare an ordinance for city council consideration and declaring effective date.
Let's go ahead and open the public hearing for the resolution first. So if anyone wants to speak to this one item, C1, please come forward now. Okay, seeing no one, we'll close that public hearing. Council entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve item C1.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, I'm sorry, did you have discussion?
I have a question.
Okay, sorry about that.
I went back and highlighted the area. Out of that area, is that the only one that's not annexed currently?
Not served.
May be a little answer to that.
I'm sorry, could you repeat your, ask your question again? Are you asking which areas?
Okay. Because I saw, is that outside of the city limits right now? So the line that's to north, I guess, better west?
This is on 59. This is one of those tracks where the city limit, the existing city limit line dissects an existing parcel. The first five hundred feet of the property adjacent to 59 is in the city limits. The back portion of that, the 2.34 acres, is currently outside.
Okay, and it looks like it's two tracks that are like.
It is two separate tracks. They're replating that and expanding the existing development on that.
Okay, okay.
Further questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
There are two items remaining on the consent agenda tonight. The first is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of February 3rd, 2015. And item three is a resolution approving and adopting the city of Victoria's investment policy and the list of qualified brokers who are authorized to engage in investment for the city of Victoria and declaring an effective date.
Mayor, move. We adopt the consent agenda items one and three. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, now number two.
Item D2, Mayor and council, I've put in front of your seats a substituted resolution for the incentive, for the preservation incentive program grant agreement. The applicant was Mica with his wife Erin Hatley, and we have subsequently found out that the property is actually owned by Tommy O'Dowd, who was a co-applicant on that application. When we drafted the resolution to approve the contract, we drafted it to enter into an agreement with the Hatleys, and it needs to be with the property owner, Ms. O'Dowd. So we've substituted a resolution in. The only change to it is the name of the person with whom we're entering into the contract. So item D2 is now a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a preservation incentive program grant agreement with Tommy O'Dowd through her agent, Mica Hatley, for a project consistent with the city's preservation incentive program in the amount of three thousand, three hundred and thirty-two dollars, and three hundred, excuse me, three thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars, and declaring an effective date.
Will we adopt? As amended, or?
It's not an amendment, it's a substitution. So the consideration, the council is currently considering the substituted version, and so there's no need for an amendment.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion second. Everybody understands? Pretty straightforward. Any questions? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Thank you. Resolutions.
Resolution E1 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to enter into a non-binding purchasing agreement with TASER International to acquire body worn cameras through TASER, through the TASER Assurance Plan and declaring an effective date.
Will we adopt E1?
Second.
Thank you. Motion and a second. Is there discussion?
Yes. Okay, when it says non-binding, what does that mean? I thought it was a five-year contract, a purchase agreement for five years.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. It is a five-year contract, but it's non-binding because city council can't bind this type of agreement over into non-binding, into a multi-year contract. So what it basically states is, in essence, you know, should council in future years, should you approve it today, should council in future years decide that there's not funding support for this program, we would simply just notify TASER International, and we would just cease to be a partner with them, and they would quit uploading our videos to the Evidence.com site. It's pretty standard, you know, I take my legal advice from my city attorney, it's a pretty standard agreement.
You did a pretty good job there, Chief. Explaining that councils can't bind another council.
The only thing I was going to add on to that was that there's very standard language that we use. In a document we call a government rider, we attach to most of our contracts, that includes it. It's very standard.
Okay, I see that for this year, we've got the grants and everything, it's going to cover it. Now, in the following years, 15, 16, 17, and 18, for the $45,000, are we going to be getting more grants or forfeiture funds, or is it going to be on a general fund?
Well, I'm sure we're going to start at the general fund level, and then if we can get grants, we will pursue grants.
Okay, but at this time, we just are going to?
Planning on general fund.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. And I'm sure the chief has a few comments he might wish to make.
Well, before you, obviously, is the proposed agreement with TASER International to enter into an agreement, a multi-year agreement, to purchase 60 body worn cameras, but it also covers the equipment, the warranty itself, and the data storage, and then the Evidence.com piece as well. And what we're proposing is that we purchase the body worn cameras, and we've kind of been through a pretty exhaustive study, research and development, testing and evaluation process with the body worn cameras. We began in about July of last year. We tested three vendors, four different types of body worn cameras. We looked at such issues as placement of the cameras, pros and cons of different locations, the equipment itself, viability of storage options, policy issues. Certainly, we have, there's some additional privacy issues that we had to address. We have a pretty robust policy in place now to go forward should you approve this, but it wasn't something that we just decided to come to city council with last week. And then, to answer your question about the grants, is I was looking at opportunities to leverage, you know, some non-general fund dollars, at least in the first year. So we had the support of the 100 Club, we had the support of Crime Stoppers, and then we also tapped into some Homeland Security dollars that were available for this. So pretty extensive process that we went through to try to identify what was best for us. And I just believe, based on what we see today in the law enforcement, that having another tool to more objectively capture the contacts with the public is just a win-win. So before you is that agreement right now.
I understand Rockport has these cameras and had them for about at least 10 years?
Yes.
And they've got substantial?
Yes.
You know, good reports from that? Okay.
I had a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
Chief, nighttime, I assume the nighttime won't be an issue. You've got, it's lit, or it's a good enough camera to capture nighttime stops and so forth?
Yes, it's a camera that captures low light conditions. It's very good, it's very, very good technology when it comes to that. So it will, I mean, it can't see down the block, you know, two or three blocks, but it'll be able to see, line of sight the things that the officers are seeing, even in low light conditions.
And who will be wearing these cameras?
Any patrol officer or any field officer, like Traffic Safety Patrol, and a few detectives that work in the field will have those.
So you'll have to put a sign that says you're being videoed?
Will be no sign, but they'll be, they're only going to videotape, and I think it's important to note, and I've mentioned it several times, but they're only going to capture law enforcement-related activity, that on a way to a call, a traffic stop, a subject stop. They won't just capture random, like if they're out, you know, sitting and having a meal, those types of encounters won't be captured on video.
Thank you.
So you've written, you've already got your procedures in place for their usage, et cetera, et cetera?
Yes, I do, sir.
Very good.
Chief, one question I've been asking, I'm going to ask it so you can answer it, is, will you continue to use the videos that are on the dashes in the cars?
Yes, we will. Right now, the distinction there is, you know, by law, by state Texas law, and actually you're going to get a report in a little bit about that, to be considered, to file a partial exemption under racial profiling law, you have to have in-car video. Now, obviously, that was, that predates body worn camera, but as of right now, you would have to actually have both. It doesn't mean that down the road, the law will change to maybe allow for some of that flexibility, but right now, it doesn't.
I have a few more comments, but I don't. Okay.
I mean, I have a comment, but.
Now's the time?
I certainly support it. I mean, it saddens me that we've come to this point. Being in medicine, it feels very much like defensive medicine, which is not cost-effective. However, I understand principle and I understand reality, and I know that your officers need some protection, and the public needs transparency. That's the reality of the world that we live in. Again, it saddens me that we've come this way, but I certainly have my support.
Understood, understood. And I do believe the word you used, transparency is real critical. This helps us be very transparent, protects the citizens and the officers. And how many times a day do we interact with the citizenry? 100, 200, you know?
Four year, about 170 calls a day, but that doesn't include just normal routine, either phone contacts or?
Traffic.
Traffic. Does, you know, I estimated at one time, and of course, you know, we'd have to go back and really vet it, but we probably make 150,000 to 200,000 contacts a year with the public, you know, easily.
Yeah, yeah. I do, I don't want to neglect to recognize the 100 Club donations. I mean, that's private money, that's very impressive, and I very much appreciate their efforts. I'm sure council does, too.
100 Club and Crime Stoppers, too.
Crime Stoppers, yes. That's a significant contribution towards that first year.
Yes, it was.
Very good, very good. Okay, anything else? We did get a motion, right?
Yes.
It's been a long day, sorry. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you, council.
Item E2 is a resolution ratifying the city manager's execution of an emergency construction contract with Palacios Marine and Industrial Coatings Incorporated for the North Street Emergency Sanitary Sewer Line Replacement, to replace a collapsed 12-inch sanitary sewer line and install a manhole for $108,295.70 and declaring an effective date.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any questions? And I understand you're about through with the job, right?
The pipe replacement was actually completed late last week, so all that remains is the pavement reparation, and the contractor's kind of been doing that behind himself, so that's all that's left, some more pavement repair.
On a 12-inch line, when it happens, how does it disrupt customers? Are you able to keep things flowing?
What we did in this case was, city staff set up bypass pumps so that we could collect that sewage upstream and jump around the collapsed area and keep flow going. We had to babysit those pumps 24/7 until we could get a contractor on site, and then throughout the reparation period.
Okay, very good, very good. Any further questions?
Couple of quick ones. Your cost center was, again?
This is the money that we budget every year. It's water wastewater fund money that we budget for emergency pipe replacement scenarios just like this. You'll see in the summer, when we come with our budget, we come seeking some emergency pipe replacement money, and it's just for these scenarios.
We've had a lot of water lines here lately bust, is that correct?
We have had a lot, we've had a number of water breaks, some significant water breaks in the past few weeks, and some of that is attributable to change in temperature and change in moisture in the ground.
So those emergency fuses are very critical.
Absolutely.
And you just don't know when you're going to need them.
It's why you maintain a fund balance in that water wastewater fund. I mean, that's a 12-inch line. Goldman Street to George Street is what, one block?
735 feet, so.
For $100,000. So, yeah, it's expensive. Okay, any?
One more question. I haven't looked at my streets, but when is North Street going to be coming up for repair, starting from like Main Street all the way to Ben Wilson?
It is currently not in the planned projects for the CIP. It is one of those projects that's been, we've looked, named it and looked at it, provided a cost amount for it, but it hasn't been prioritized. We can certainly discuss that when we talk about CIP in March.
Maybe in sections or something? You know, because it's really getting down there. You know, you got the school right there, and just?
I think the cost breakdown is in sections, isn't it, Lynn?
It's probably not right now, but I'll have it that way, ready that evening.
Yeah, I think I'd like to see it in sections, that way we could maybe take a look at some of it. Okay, thanks.
All those in, we done?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we have a motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see, city manager reports.
Yes, and I'm going to move a few around if you don't mind, but the former mayor preempted us, but I'd like OC to introduce the new CBB director, Anthony Cordo, who started yesterday, so.
It is my pleasure to introduce Tony Cordo. Tony is the new CBB director for Victoria, comes to us from Columbus, Ohio, where he was the assistant director at Experience Columbus, had, was managing 40 employees, several different visitor centers, comes with, was certainly among our interview team, the top candidate, is the only one we brought in from out of the community, and was unanimous selection for the new CBB director. Tony, step on up, say hello.
Thanks, OC. Honorable council members and city manager Garrett, it's a pleasure to be here. Looking forward to being a part of this community. It's been amazing meeting people throughout Victoria. City has a lot to offer, both conventions, meetings, as well as leisure tourists, and it's easy to forget what's in your own backyard, but you really, truly have a great city. So looking forward to being a citizen and getting people here to spend their money.
Great, said the right thing there.
Yeah, thank you.
All right.
I'm going to move Colby's report up, since he's helping with a Mardi Gras dance tonight at DeLeon Plaza, for anybody that wants to come out in the cool, cool, cool night.
Mayor, council, if you remember in this fiscal year budget, we budgeted for a splash pad to be at Community Center Park over by the U Sports Complex, and so I'm here to give an update and get, I've got a few points that I need some decisions on as we move forward. The Community Center Splash Pad, this is where the location has came through to be. In the next year's budget, we will be budgeting to demo the pool, but this is where we come to find out, we did hire a landscape architect to help us choose a location and what fit the flow of the park, and this is where we decided was the best area for that splash pad to be laid, right next to the playground and the tennis courts there. It felt like it was a very good location to place it.
You also can use the parking?
Yes, the parking, so we don't have to build parking. There's utilities there, there's sewer there, so a lot of those things are there that we're not going to have to move very far to facilitate this project. This is the conceptual drawing of the splash pad, of what it would look like. We went with a sports theme, of course, being there with the U Sports Complex. This is Longtree Splash Pad, and I wanted to put this picture up to show the differences in the two pads and what I'm proposing. Longtree's square footage is 2,400 square feet, that has a capacity of 96 kids, and that's through the National Recreation and Parks Association, which recommends 25 square feet per person. The proposed would be 3,800 to 4,400 square feet, which would hit 152 to 176 children. And so we really are recommending going to the larger splash pad, just because we feel like with the term that's going out there, with that park being a more of a community park rather than a pocket park, or, you know, a small regional park in the area, felt like we really need to go up in size on that splash pad. The original budget for this project was 615,000. The proposed splash pad is coming in about $760,000, and I'm going to let Gilbert explain where that money's going to come from. And so the decision point is, is do we want to increase the budget to go to the larger splash pad, or do you want me to scale down that project and go to a size that's more like Longtree, that 2,600 square feet?
And the budget, we've got some underruns on some projects that we can fund the additional money to build the larger splash pad. And of course, it is our recommendation, because of the location, to build the larger splash pad, because we do believe it'll be used a lot more. Longtree is used heavily already, but we believe this park will be used, and you've got a lot of neighborhood kids that are within walking distance of this park, too.
Yeah, my recommendation would not be to build the same size splash pad at Community Center Park. You're going to get more use out there, I believe.
Council's okay with the, going with the larger splash pad, we'll come back with a budget amendment with different areas where we can pull the money from. Yes.
The first splash pad we built, it was the first one in Victoria, we didn't have good data on, you know, the first one, and it has proven to be, 2020 hindsight, we should have built it bigger. I would hate to think we'd make the same mistake twice when we have evidence that it needs to be bigger.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. I mean, it sounds like we can find the extra money and fit it in.
Mm-hmm.
I still have sticker shock, what I always do with everything. It's just incredible, with stuff, you do it right, and it's a long-term asset. You know, I would assume we'd get a lot of years out of it without any significant capital expenditure for a while, so spread out over the years, it's not too bad.
Yeah.
Well, it has also a greater utility, as opposed to two months in the summer, you can run it five months out of the year, run it longer hours, less overhead, you don't need lifecards, it just has a lot to go for it, I think.
For example, we opened the Longtree on spring break, and we closed this year after things, after, in the start of November, and so we were running for a long time.
Now, you tripled the utility of it.
Yeah, the only thing I've noticed, that depiction or drawing was, I know it's very early, I didn't see any shade, not much shade.
There are shade structures that are built into this. There are shade structures, there's bathrooms, that's just the conceptual, what the actual splash pad would look like.
Okay.
4,400 square feet does not include the extra pad that will be around with three different shade structures that we can use for birthday parties or whatever, and the bathroom facilities, the fencing and stuff, that was just the conceptual drawing of the, you know, what's going to be in the splash pad.
Do you want to go back to that drawing? You moved really quick through that.
I'm sorry.
No, I don't, yeah.
And assuming y'all are okay with the sports kind of theme, since it is in the park?
Yeah.
And this layout will change just a little bit. I've got a few ideas on it, but I think for the most part, we're pretty close. We're not too far away from that.
I did want to ask the city manager, so you felt like we do have the finance available through other projects that didn't cost quite as much as we expected them or anticipated?
We've got some construction savings, and then Colby has some savings in some of his line items that, so the finance director has assured me we can find the money, so.
And hopefully, I mean, if our sales tax holds up, it's very healthy. Y'all have been checking your report, it's very healthy, very good.
This would be this fiscal year?
Yes, sir. And just to go on that, we are planning to use a buy board purchasing on this to help speed that process up. All the different companies are able to go through buy board, and so that is one thing we will be doing, or planning to do.
It would be, when would it open, you think?
Mr. Evans, I'm not exactly sure. I'd have to get, once we approve the contracts and stuff, to get you the construction. I'm thinking four to six months, but it just depends on what their timeline is as far as building, getting the materials to us and that, so I don't have a for-sure answer that I can give you right now.
I hope maybe by next March?
Definitely.
By next spring, yes. No, no, I was, I'm crossing my fingers that we could be open at the end of the fall. But I'm not 100% sure about that.
Definitely by next March.
Oh, yes, yes, sir.
Absolutely.
Yes.
That's one other benefit, is they are easier to build as well.
Yeah, okay, good.
Very good.
Okay.
Exciting.
Everybody's okay with that?
Yeah.
We'll move forward. Thank you, Colby.
Thank you.
Okay. The next report is from Amanda Rocha with the Texas Zoo. She comes at budget time, but we thought it'd be a great opportunity, kind of midway through the year, so she can give everybody an update on what's going on with our wonderful zoo. Our wonderful zoo.
Our wonderful zoo. Hello, everyone. I'm so happy to be here, always excited to report good news, so, oh, I have this thingy. We'll just fly through this really quick, it's just basic statistics. Y'all know where we are, but we always just do it for everyone. We're the South Texas Zoo Logical Society, our DBA is the Texas Zoo. Of course, we're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit located in beautiful Riverside Park. We sit on six acres of developed property. We are fifty-eight years old this year, so we're already starting to prepare for our sixtieth anniversary celebration. Hopefully, it's just spectacular. I can't even give you a sneak peek, because I don't really know what it is, but one thing we are doing that will hopefully be announced, this actually goes coming month, is we are doing a new logo for the zoo, and we're going back to like a retro of the traditional, original logo with the coyote, the moon, the Texas Zoo, because that is our roots, and that's what we're here for. And of course, we're the National Zoo of Texas. At this time, we have nineteen employees, three part-time, oh, not eighteen, full-time, but three part-time and the rest full-time. Our mission statement is just to connect people with wildlife from Texas and the rest of the world. We advance conservation through education, recreation, science, and action, and we try really hard to make sure we're doing every single one of these. Right now, the biggest science we're participating in is the red wolf program. As you know, the Texas Zoo does have red wolves, so we have, currently have one red wolf, her name is Luna, and she should be getting boyfriend pretty soon. But the red wolf program is really struggling on the federal level. The only wild red wolves currently are found in North Carolina and part of South Carolina. They've had some major legal issues with allowing night hunting of coyote. It's hurting their wild red wolf population. The states are thinking about doing whatever they can to push out the red wolves and work with Fish and Wildlife to delist the red wolf. So that program right now is really under the gun. We definitely can't have the red wolf taken off the endangered species list, but that's what we're working on. Our guys are seriously getting data on, you know, you don't want to know what they gotta do to get some data, but hey, they're doing it, better than than me. But that's just a really hot topic for us right now. The other one is the ocelot. Currently, we have a breeding pair at the zoo, and I don't know, she's either getting chunky, or she's expecting a baby, we don't really know. Either way, she's eating a lot more, but we're having fun with that. And this is the area we serve, we serve all the way up, budding right up to Houston, south, past Corpus Christi, down toward the Kingsville area, and right up to San Antonio. And we get people from all of these areas every weekend, and it's just so spectacular to see that they're coming to our city, of course, not just for the zoo, but they are coming here. They do believe in Victoria, just like we do, and they sign our little book, and they just have a great time, and then they go home, and it's wonderful. These are different things we carry out, how we carry out our mission. Of course, we're a living museum, we exhibit animals. We work on species survival plans and reintroductionery programs, continuing to work on our edu, our endangered species collection, and always trying to promote conservation education amongst our youth and our general public as well. We reach people through many different ways. Our number-one way of reaching people is our field trips. We are in field trip season coming up, yay, here's our buses, my favorite picture on the planet, so I show it all the time. And it's just so exciting to see when we have five hundred kids in the zoo at a time, and it's really quite scary, but it's wonderful. It's like, who's feeding cheetos to who, but they're all good. We have seen more and more field trips coming from like the Corpus Christi area, Alice area, and that's just so spectacular, that they're choosing to come to us instead of going to the aquarium in Corpus, or let's even say Brownsville Zoo. It just makes us really proud, and proud of our community as well. Hard scheduling program, programming is constantly changing, just trying to figure out what works best for our public, what's the best schedule. I think we finally got it worked out, so every day you come to the zoo, if it's the summertime, you're gonna see something ten, eleven, twelve, one, and two o'clock every day. And that's just spectacular to be able to walk in the door and be able to go do something. During these winter months, we don't do the animal shows at one o'clock, just on when school's out and like spring break and things like that. We have a new program, it's called Zoo Squad, and that is a monthly homeschool program. So that's, it's just started, it was its first month, we had about twenty kids come out, and that's neat. Our education department's like, just throw another one on there, Amanda. But they're doing great. Our primate encounters have really taken off, and I hope we can schedule a meeting for everyone to come out, and we can actually do that. We've actually, we're, they're for sale, they're thirty dollars apiece, and it's an encounter with some of the lemurs, as well as the tamarins on exhibit, and we've actually sold like over two hundred of them right now. About a hundred have come from the Corpus Christi area, and we have a family that comes back about once a month just to do it. And they get to feed the little guys, and they jump on them, it just creates a wonderful opportunity. And we're actually one of the only zoos right now doing it in Texas. They did it, and they stopped, they didn't stop, so it's really neat how people are coming from everywhere, saying, oh, I love that, I'm glad you're doing it. This is just a picture, that's Bright Eyes, our red wolf lemur, hanging out with Whitney and Mike, our curator, doing an alligator program where they, all the alligators are trained, hand-fed, they come up to you, and that way you can really see them nice, and people get to learn all about our beautiful alligators. So this is the most exciting part for us right here, our zoo development, and this is our lion expansion, and all we lack is sod, and it's coming in on Thursday, and we are just so excited. The two lions have their fifth birthday coming up the second or third week of March, so we're gonna try to get with the chamber to do a ribbon cutting on their birthday, how exciting. But this project has taken, of course, a lot longer than I expected, and a lot more money than I expected, but we're just so proud of it, just to see, it's, it's so huge, and it's ours, and it makes us really proud. So along with this, the eagle exhibit is all cut out with dirt, the liners coming in, rocks coming in. Our eagles are currently in quarantine in San Antonio. Once the girls move over to their lion expansion, their exhibit, Grant, who is loaning us his jaguar, will be in next week to do a site visit and inspection of our current lion exhibit, which will turn into our jaguar exhibit. And those are the three big ones. The petting zoo actually just started today, and hopefully it's up and running by spring break, because our, our people need a petting zoo, they need pet to go. And we did bring in some new javelinas. The collared peccary is a serious issue. The, a lot of people aren't exhibiting them anymore, and so they're being very difficult to get the accreditation. People want you to exhibit the Chacoan peccary, which is a highly endangered species. We opted out of it, because we want to stick with the native species. And we're so happy we brought in these, the four new ones, because we actually have some babies running around admin, running through the park, and it's just so much fun, and they're hysterical. They're actually a lot like puppies, and so it's, it's fun. Other zoo development, we're making a new macaw exhibit, because a lot of times we take in these animals that people just don't want anymore, and the macaws are so gorgeous, and they're endangered species, and we actually have about fifteen that are not on exhibit. So we made a little exhibit, and it's, they've now outgrown it, so we're changing over to make a new macaw exhibit. Concession stand is moving to our caboose, I met with the Health Department, we just have to plum it up, and we're good to go. The stage is never-ending, the new set design has been built, so hopefully before spring break, it's on there. We just need some shade. So it's just a real exciting time for us. Upcoming events, Aussie Kingdom is our traveling exhibit coming through in April for nine days. The public will have the opportunity to touch, feed, learn about Australian animals such as kangaroos, wallaroos, different kind of birds, and that'll be in the zoo. And last year, we brought in the sea lions, this year it's Aussie Kingdom, so we're excited. Waldabout Wine is our annual fundraiser. It's in our eighth year, and I hope everyone can come out to it, because it's, it's, last year we had five hundred and fifty people, and hope we don't get more than six fifty this year, because we're kind of out of capacity there. Endangered Species Day, Earth Day, Animal Olympics, Reptile Week, and those are all educational events for us. We've moved our Cowboys and Coyotes and Native American Day to the summer. It's extremely hot, but we keep getting rained out every other month, so we're just moving it, we're all gonna die of heat, but we're gonna learn about Native Americans and cowboys. And then we have our end-of-the-summer party, which is a new event for us, and there'll be a ninja turtle, learning about, really, it's learning about turtles and tortoises and stuff, but we're gonna tie it with ninja turtles and get dupes some people to come to the zoo and learn. So always go wild. There's a couple of things that I wanted to mention, a couple changes we have made. We have started out, like contracting out our finances. Instead of having our own admin person on-site, I now have a contractor, and that's just, like our favorite word, transparency, I just want to make sure it's a hundred percent clean. I don't want to ever look like my hands are in it, so it's out there. But because of that, we have run a little behind, just trying to catch up, getting the new system, but we're finally getting our flow going. The, we are not going to this, well, we did not go to the San Antonio Livestock Show, they ran into some money things and land, I mean, not land, but property issues, we didn't go. So that's twenty-two thousand dollars that we do not have in our income this year. So we're just kind of just running a gun, and every day is a new day, cutting back where we can, and just hoping, spring break's great. But like, just for example, our workman's comp insurance is what we usually pay with that money, and that's twenty-two thousand dollars. So it's a little tight at the zoo, but we're just not stopping, we're just gonna keep going. The other big project on the table, of course, besides these, is our berm. We've gotten about five bids, because I, every time I get one, I'm like, that's not true, that, no way can it be that expensive, but just from an engineer to actually make the engineering plan, and that's running about fifteen thousand dollars. So what we've decided, what I've decided to do is, let's wait out the spring, let's see how it goes. If we have the additional fifteen thousand in the budget, we'll pay for it like that, if not, possibly use our line of credit, because currently we're debt-free, don't want to use a line of credit, but this is so important, it has to happen for the FEMA regulations. We are finding that advertising is working for us, we're, we have more advertising than we've ever had, and our numbers are looking great, advertising in the Corpus Christi area, and we get direct reflection. If we put up a billboard, people are signing and saying, I saw you on the billboard. So it's fantastic, you know, we don't have a lot of money to do that, but when we do, it's, it works, so I'm glad to know about that. The, oh, I met Tony and OC, they came to the zoo after the tourism meeting, I don't know, a couple of months ago, so it was real, I'm real excited, and, you know, I think he got a little bit longer visit than he planned, but, haha, and we had fun, so I'm really excited that he's here, and I promise I won't call you the new the roof. Do you all have any questions for me, or anything like that? No?
I think a good reminder, though, Amanda, is you are a nonprofit, and will take donations from anybody that is...
I will take donations from anybody, you know.
Which will also...
And it's really, it's not even just money, it's stuff, because, you know, these guys need crates, you know, right, well, actually, next month is when we really hit our hurricane prep, just to make sure, and crates break, and so we all, we want to make sure that we have a crate for every animal to get out of Dodge in case that river's coming up. So it's like crates, it's shavings, and the Northside Ranch store had a huge Christmas tree donation for us, and it filled our van three times with amazing things like shavings and blankets, and even stuffed animals. We recycle, so we take aluminum cans from people, so there's a lot of things you can do, or just come to the zoo. And I like Tony and his, bringing money, money, money. All right?
Amanda, your presentation is very thorough, as always, and your enthusiasm is infectious.
Thank you.
So thank you. I just, a couple of quick questions. You do have your board that meets, how many board members do you have?
Currently, we have nine.
Okay. How often do y'all meet?
Once a month.
Okay.
Yep. It had changed a little bit, because my board was growing quite large, so they were just doing an ex-con meeting once a month, and then a, a big board meeting like quarterly, but that was, they, we only did that, I think, for six months. It didn't work out, so everything's back to, everyone meets once a month.
And you meet at the, at the zoo?
Mm-hmm. The officers, they still do the ex-con meeting, and that's usually someplace in town, and then the monthly meeting's at the zoo at five-thirty.
Very good. Do you have a date for the Waldabout Wine?
Yeah, it's March twentieth.
Okay, that's a very fun event, so...
Yeah, we just had a big meeting with HEB, they're back to doing our food this year, and they're so excited. It's gonna be about eleven different pairings, and the decorator's pumped, I'm pumped.
Very good, very good.
All right, thank y'all, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. I, I see Allison. Allison's still sitting back there, she remembers those days, running that, the board, and, and during the days of not having a director, and so Allison was a trooper for the zoo, too.
One more?
We have two more reports, and it's with Chief Craig. His first one is the partial exemption racial profiling, and I believe they're gonna hand that out.
Thank you, sir.
And then his second report is on the annual crime report, which was in your read file last time. So I'll just let him move from one to the next without pausing.
That'll work. Good evening, Mayor, members of the Senate Council. Before you is the 2014 partial exemption racial profiling report that is submitted to the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement. The report itself is required by law to be presented to the governing body of each law enforcement agency, honorable for March first of each year. This report is a compilation of data gathered as a result of motor vehicle traffic stops made by officers of the Victoria Police Department. For these purposes, vehicle stop means an occasion in which a police officer stops a motor vehicle for an alleged violation of a law of ordinance, and the officers capture the required information from those stops that result in a citation and/or arrest, or both. The state of Texas revised the reporting requirements in eighty-first legislative session, and the attached data sheet that's in front of you complies with those reporting requirements. The report itself is formatted, is required under the state of Texas, and in looking at the data, and I've had some history now, looking at the data of the last several years, it does not suggest that the racial profiling is, from a institutional perspective, is occurring based on the data analysis that is in front of you. And I'm here to answer any questions on that before we talk about crime statistics.
Okay.
I have a question. The figure on the, was search consented, is that for the total? Out of the total, only the four hundred and twenty-six had the search consent? Or yes or no, the total in there?
That would be the total number of people that consented to a search if, you know, when asked.
Oh, okay, when asked, so not necessarily because, you know, the stop.
Correct. We don't search every vehicle we stop.
Okay.
Very good.
And now I'm segueing into the Victoria Police Department's 2014 annual crime report. I did bring a couple of extra copies in case someone did require that, but I'm very pleased to report some of the data that's, you want one? I'm sorry. I, I don't know if I have enough for everyone, but...
I can share.
Just give a second.
She needs one, yes, thank you.
You have an extra one? I'll take one, but, no, I didn't bring mine.
This report captures 2014 annual crime for the Victoria Police Department. One, a couple of things of note, that we actually had an increase of calls for service. We went from about eighty-seven thousand calls for service, required a response to about, you know, ninety-five thousand for the year 2014. So that tells me the workload is increasing. At the same time, taking a look at, we saw another reduction in total Class I crimes, and Class I crimes are those crimes which were required to report to the state and the federal government, that capture your, your, your violent crime categories, which is murder, rape, robbery, aggravated assault, but it also captures some key property crimes, that being burglary, theft, and motor vehicle theft. Again, for the fourth straight year, we saw a reduction in those Class I crimes that we reported. This year, for 2014, it was down seven point nine-two percent. We also saw a reduction in total violent crime. That reduction went down from three eighty-four, the total number, to three fifty-one. Property crimes, too, was down, was very pleased to see this. We were trending higher in property crimes for a while. That is our major push. The big drivers of that are motor vehicle burglary and burglary itself. We had a concerted effort in an education program that I believe had, had a lot to do with, with seeing some of the dramatic increases, decreases, I'm sorry, in this area, so I was real pleased to see that. If you turn to page three, it covers kind of just some historical data on total Class I crimes, should you be interested in comparing that. And then the class crime rate, and I used, since Texas Monthly decided that they were going to, to use the one hundred thousand population, I threw that in there and changed it from a thousand to one hundred thousand, should there be any questions related to that. And then on the bottom of page two are Class II crimes, and typically, the Class II crimes are crimes that are not obviously Class I's, but some of those, you'll notice, are actually productivity drivers. That being, if, if you look at DUI and drugs and narcotics, that's actually police-related That being, if you look at DUI and drugs and narcotics, that's actually police-related activity and arrests that also generates an offense report, so it gets counted against us on Crime Stat, but it's actually a productivity number. Class 1, Class 2 crime rates on page four, and those are pretty self-explanatory in terms of adding up both. And then I also capture a total number of arrests. I thought it was interesting that we had more arrests this year. During the year, we actually, as you well know, struggled a bit when it comes to some of our staffing numbers, and we still saw a significant increase in those arrest numbers, targeting some of the areas in which we were seeing some challenges, so I'm real pleased with that. I think a lot of this has to go with, again, with the outstanding job that the men and women of the Victoria Police Department are doing each and every day, but there's some other, you know, factors involved in terms of community engagement. We're seeing a lot more of the community willing to tell us what's going on, giving us a heads up on certain crime trends, and we've actually... Some of the most important series of crimes that we've been able to solve have been through tips from the community. I think you're seeing more in a way of leveraging technology. That's helped us work a lot smarter, not necessarily harder, so I think we're seeing some returns in our investment in that area as well. So overall, I'm pretty pleased with these numbers, and I hope that we have a continued type of success as we look towards 2015, and I'm available to answer any questions you might have.
I'd like to make some observations, Chief. Kudos to your crime prevention unit. I think a lot is attributed to their efforts.
Yes, sir.
In informing the public and working with the public. I also want to commend you for your style, your neighborhood and community policing. I think that's very important, that you continue that effort in engaging our local officers, our young officers with our community and our neighborhoods. I'm very pleased when I see the officers interacting with children, and I have seen that and observed it for myself, and that is just a good feeling to see neighborhood kids talking and visiting with our police officers. Your zone meetings, I hope... I'm waiting for your next zone meeting. I think that will help. It will continue to increase that communication. Your clergy meeting that you had recently, I'd like to encourage that you seek out other civic groups in the community and bring them together as well so that we can engage the whole city as to the police department's efforts and how we can help you as well and our officers in doing a great job for our community.
Thank you, sir.
I just want to make sure on the clergy meeting, that was Larry... Reverend Larry Green that...
Initiated that.
...put that to get and initiated that and came to the chief and has been working with the chief. So I think he's with Strong Families, if I've got that correct, his group. Is it Strong Families?
That's the group that he's...
Yeah, so Pastor Green.
But I think we should be proactive, too, and reach out to civic groups, any of them, whether it's Rotary or Lions, Chamber, pick one, there's many, and engage them and let them maybe run with a ball, plant something, and do similar type of interaction, if it's practical, of course.
Well, I know the Crime Prevention Group does do a lot of community social groups, but it's continued...
I'm very pleased with their efforts.
Yeah, it's continued effort.
Do we still have anything to do with the kids? Like, they used to go to the schools. We don't have any programs where the police officers go to the schools?
Do not have an SRO program. Is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
We do not have that right now.
Well, now, SRO is they were stationed at the schools. That's probably...
No, no, no. I'm talking about just going to go and visit the schools.
We do actually do that.
Okay.
We've had occasion where we do it, but a lot of times, it's like what Councilman Alvarez was talking about, where officers on their own have a school in their zone and will actually go there. I know I was just at DeLeon and Hopkins with the zone officer, and we visited a Rotary event, a nighting event. So we do have occasions to include that in our community policing assignments, if you will.
Because I think the kids would find that very interesting.
Baseball card program officers has gone over, I guess, probably more so than you thought. It's well-received.
Exceeded my expectations, you know, and I really wanted to, talking about the beginning of last year, really push that community engagement to inform the public, better educate them on crime prevention, because it's one of the more difficult things to measure. You know, how many crimes did you actually prevent? So... But I will tell you that once they got the, you know, kind of the vision, you know, I take no credit for the creativity involved in what they put together, but they just exceeded my expectations in terms of that. And then the trading cards, we definitely did not anticipate that we would have to order the number that we've had to order. It's been a very successful program.
Even though they're not in the schools, but I mean, the children just really love that, and they're seeking those cards out from the officer.
I've learned that I have to keep, you know, about 50 in my pocket all the time.
Any... One quick question, Mayor. Any chance the fire department and the police department are going to have a softball rematch or kickball?
You know, speaking of that, it seems like the last two years, you know, we've defeated them in the soapbox derby, and, you know, I haven't seen much of the fire chief since then, and I...
There.
I have that, you know, I have the trophy in my office, and I put it right in front of me when he comes over and visits me, so...
He dare not challenge you? Is that the...
No, it's been... He's been very quiet when it comes to that. I'm sure you're going to see something real soon. I think they're actually planning something, if I'm not mistaken, so...
I can tell you what the fire chief will say about police officers should be able to drive cars a little bit better than the fire department. But the fire department did beat them in softball... Or kickball two years in a row, so...
That's old, you know, that's old ancient history.
So we're going to be fair.
Yeah.
Couple... Real quick, specific question about the report. The increase in rate, that was due to a redefinition of that crime, correct?
That's correct.
Because it was pretty drastic.
It was not unexpected, and we anticipated it was going to be an increase, and it was.
Okay. And I think you touched on the juvenile arrest. The numbers are staggeringly low over the... And that's great, and I... You said something I may not have heard you. That's amazing. I mean, in 2007, 1,594, and 2014, 147.
And I can't obviously take credit for the fact that perhaps that there's not juvenile crime going on, but certainly there's a more concerted effort in the juvenile judicial system to divert more of those types of offenders, so we're seeing less opportunity for the Victoria Police Department to make those arrests for criminal violations.
Okay. That's very good.